This meeting of the Hudson Board of Education for April 9th, 2013. Please stand as you are able and join us to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item on the agenda, or third item on the agenda is recognition, and I'm going to turn it over to Sandy.
We'd like to highlight some of our budding young artists, and if they want to start coming forward, from February 23rd through March 1st at the Wisconsin State Capitol Rotunda, three art students from EP Rock displayed art in the Youth Art Month State Capitol Awards Art Show. And so with them is their teacher, Cindy Gresmer, and I think she'll introduce who our special guests are here this evening.
Hi, and thanks for inviting us. It's a really special moment to be here. This is Ava Johnson.
Can you please stand to the mic?
Oh, sure. Sorry. This is Ava Johnson, and Ava Johnson got her artwork to the Northwest Regional Art Show at WITC, and then also to the State Capitol in the Rotunda, and she created a fish. And this is Kaylee Baumann, and Kaylee Baumann did a radial design. It's a design within a circle. Hold that up a little bit. And it's designed off a rose window, like a church window, and it's created with a pattern that she designed herself, and she made it in paper, and then now this final creation is metal. And Ava's is a watercolor. Any questions?
So, there were three girls that were state award winners, and then in addition, Anya was selected to receive the prestigious WT Graham Award, and only 40 students in the state received this award.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't see Anya yet, but she did choose the one that's right, all the way, the fish, the oil pastel fish, all the way over to the right. And yes, it's an award that's been in place for 25 years, and this is the 25th year, and Anya won. Forty students from the whole state won K through 12th grade, so it's quite an honor. Her art will be framed, it'll move on to the State Fair, and it'll be in the Fine Arts Building at the Wisconsin State Fair.
Great. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for sharing. All right, next on our agenda is one of 50 music directors who make a difference. Sandy.
Middle School Band Director Connie Root was chosen as one of 50 Directors Who Make a Difference. We're going to ask Connie to come forward as well, by the school band and orchestra in their 15th Annual Report released in December. So, we actually learned about this in their December issue, December 2012. An instrumental music educator from each of the 50 states was selected as a person who makes a difference, and Connie Root was selected to represent the state of Wisconsin. In her statements that were in the paper, "We teach so much more than music fundamentals and performance to our students. Being involved in music develops skills that will be with them their entire lives. Students are allowed to be creative, be expressive, work as a team, and develop personal strengths." Sounds like you live and breathe HSD 2025.
Perhaps.
So, we are recognizing Connie, and we say congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Connie.
Connie, I'm going to have you stay up and have your music educators join you for the next one, please. Once again, the Hudson School District has been selected as one of 307 school districts across the country as Best Communities for Music Education by the NAMM Foundation. This is out of 2,000 districts that were surveyed. Now, Carol and I talked this morning, and we were trying to figure out, but we think since 2005, every year but one, we have been recognized. So, with our addition of orchestra, with not cutting back, we are seen as someone that, a district that really supports music education. The Best Communities designation recognizes collaborative from the ground-up efforts of teachers, administrators, students, and parents who continually work to keep music education as an integral part of the core curriculum. And I did go online and found the certificates. They can each take a certificate.
Nice color. Thank you. That'll help me with that. Okay.
No, it's just, every year, I'm the one that has filled up this survey, and it takes about a half an hour to do it, and when I first saw it years ago, I thought, well, what's the big deal? But then I saw the different groups and organizations that are supporting this, including the National Association for Music Education are supportive of this group as well. And the survey asks all kinds of questions about, you know, K through 12, and from our administrators, and from cutbacks, and where you don't have cutbacks, and I think especially it kind of shines through that, you know, back when we added orchestra to our district, other districts around, I think, the country were cutting back on those kinds of things, and Hudson is moving forward, and our music program, K through 12, has just continued to grow. And it's not just because of the teachers, it's because of the, it's the faculty, all through our schools, our administration, and certainly the support from parents and our school board.
Can you also please introduce yourselves for our viewing audience, so they know who everyone is?
I'm Carol Dolly from Hudson Middle School. I direct the choirs.
I'm Amy Galick, and I teach elementary music at Hudson Prairie.
I'm Paul Crazin. I teach elementary music at EP Rock and Rivercrest, and I teach middle school band lessons.
And I'm Connie Root.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you so much for all you do for our students and our community. Next item is Cory.
Thank you. Could I have Lisa Rambo, would you please come up to the mic here? Lisa Rambo is a Special Education Assistant at Hudson High School, the mother of four who competed on season 14 of the NBC's reality show, The Biggest Loser. The Concessance began shooting for the season in September, I believe, and the season finale aired on March 18th. We're recognizing Lisa tonight as she's been an outstanding role model for our student and staff wellness efforts in the district. And just a couple comments. Diane, if you could move to the next slide, please. Lisa made her commitment to a healthier lifestyle for herself and her family, and by the season finale had lost 108 pounds from her 246-pound starting weight, so about 44% of her body weight, and was runner-up for the At Home Prize, so that close.
That close.
So, as I said before, Lisa's a great role model for our students and staff at the high school and across the district, and supporting healthy eating, physical activity, and development of healthy life habits. So, I just wanted to have, give Lisa a chance to share a little bit about her experience and her journey while on the show.
It was an amazing...
Speak right into the mic, please.
It was an amazing journey, this Biggest Loser journey, and I've been blessed to do it in such an amazing, supportive community. The high school is a great place to, it's amazing, I could have the best job in all the land. And the high school students, it was awesome how they got behind me, and when I got back, sold red T-shirts to help raise money for the American Heart Association, and we're getting behind this health and wellness movement. I got to speak with all the freshmen about my experience, and I really, I went into this not only about losing weight, but about gaining strength, and I really wanted to be not only a role model about healthy eating, but about how if you can put your mind to something, you can accomplish anything. And it was incredible, and I hope that in the months and years to come, I'll be able to share more and more about this and help empower our students, so I'm really excited.
As I was preparing for tonight, I noticed on the internet all these photos of Lisa on the Today Show with Jimmy Fallon, and when I spoke with her, I said, "Do you think you could do a school board meeting recognition for us?" So, Lisa, we're very proud of what you've accomplished, and we are so appreciative of your help in telling your story to our staff and our students in the district and our community. So, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is winter athletics. And we'll turn it over to Ms. DeVos and company.
As Daniel introduces you, then you can step forward. You guys come forward. We all want to see your faces. Thank you for having us. This is our favorite part, and I know this is their favorite part, recognition for all the hard work of the athletes that we've done in the winter season here. It's probably their least favorite speaking, so I'm going to turn this over to Dan Trupicio. Dan runs our Athletes Making Progress Group. Dan?
Yeah, I'm here to represent Athletes Making Progress, and I will introduce the different sports teams for you here today. Just a little about, a little bit about Athletes Making Progress. We meet every Thursday at the high school, and we promote sportsmanship and attendance. And just a couple of the things that we've done this year is we helped with the, because Craig Urbic was honored at Hudson High School, so we helped with that, organized that event. We help with halftime things at basketball games and stuff, and we also are planning on going to elementary schools to read to elementary school students. And so, but first, we have boys' basketball. We have Steph Smith, Joel Kelly, Dan Kelly, and Alex Newell to talk about boys' basketball.
All right, I'm Steph Smith. I'm captain on the Hudson Raiders basketball team. I'll just tell you a little bit about our season. I don't exactly remember what our record was. It was sub-500, but we overcame a lot of adversity. We had a lot of injuries to start the year. Six of our top 10 players were injured to start the year, which is kind of crazy. So, that was, we got out of the gate a little bit rough, but we stayed the course and got a couple win streaks in there. We also played the toughest schedule that Hudson basketball has ever played, according to our coach. We played the Minnesota State Champions from last year, and in some big tournaments that Dan Kelly will tell you about right now.
We played in, we got invited to two different tournaments, classics events in Minnesota, the first one being in Minnetaka, where we got to play the, was it 3A? We played a defending champion, and we played pretty good against them. We ended up losing, but it was a great way to start the season, and we got to know what it was like to play against really good competition. And we, we got, the next classic that we played in was in Prior Lake. We played against a really good Osseo team, and there was a lot of good teams there. We got to play in front of Tubby Smith, the former Minnesota basketball coach, and other recruiters and coaches were there also, and it was just a great experience to play in the different classics and tournaments. One highlight I really enjoyed over this year, a couple of the seniors, we went over to the YMCA, and we volunteered with the Kenny Kids. They're a Special Olympic Program based in River Falls, and we basically just played basketball with them on a Saturday morning and helped them prepare for their regional tournament that was in two weeks from then. We, it was just a great experience working with those kids, and it was, it was a highlight of the season. We really learned a lot from them, and I think Alex has something to say now.
Hi, I just wanted to say, one of my best experiences this year was over the holiday break, we always go play the holiday tournament, and, where was it, over in Steams Point? DC Ever, somewhere in there?
Yeah.
Anyway, so, it was just a really good experience. It was a turning point in our season. We started to win strings and wins together, and I, us four, we all roomed together, and just a great experience getting to know them even better, and we've always been friends growing up, since fourth grade, playing basketball together, so it's always been fun, so it's a great way to end the year.
All right, so, I guess I'm an AMP, I am an AMP too, so now I'm introducing girls' basketball with Sarah Cryer and Ellie Whitaker.
I'm Ellie Whitaker, and we are two of the senior captains for the girls' basketball program. The new coaching staff really did a great job stepping into their roles and getting a new program started for the year.
I'm Sarah Cryer, and our record this year was 7 and 17, which, like the boys, was sub-500, but I think everyone would agree if you came and watched some of the games. Our record didn't reflect the competitiveness that we brought to every game, so we had a sub-500 record, but it was a much more successful year from, like, from a basketball perspective. We really appreciated being able to set the precedence for the future of our program. This is our new, another new coach that we've had. We've had a few in the last couple of years, and we had to all work together to try to set the groundwork for the future of the program, and we have faith that the girls below us are going to continue all the hard work that we started this year. And we, we also got involved in the community, which was something fun to see, to generate some support and interest. We did some work with the YMCA on weekends, and we tried to get teams involved at our games by coming to the locker room before the game and being down on the court while we were warming up, and it's good to see all the interest in the younger grades, because we know that eventually they're going to grow and be part of our program, so we're very excited to see where the program goes, and it was a pretty successful year from our perspective.
Okay. Next up, we have four members of our cheer and stunt team here to talk about their season.
Hi, I'm Kayla Van Allen, and I was one of the captains this year of the varsity team, so that's what we came here to talk about. We had a great season this year. We accomplished so much, and it was a really great experience because half of our team was new, because half of our team left last year. We started out our season competing against one of the best nationally-ranked teams in the U.S., so it was a great way for our team to build a lot of strength, and we also got a really great family bond out of it, because we had to work together. Next, we, after we competed against them, we got a bid to Nationals, which was the first for our team at Hudson, so it was a really great experience, and we actually did go to a Nationals. We went to Wild Factor, and we did place first in our division. What else? We went to Regionals and State. At Regionals, we did place first, so this will be the third year we've placed first at our Regionals, and then we also did go to State, which was a great experience. We didn't place as well we'd like to, but overall, we did compete fairly well.
Earlier in the year, our coach gave me the opportunity to travel to Hawaii this summer to go to the Hawaii/USA Cheer Camp for about eight days, and I applied and I was accepted. So, this summer, at the end of June, I'll be going down there for a little over a week, and I expect that to be a really good experience. I hope to learn a lot.
Yes, that's basically it. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we do not have anyone here to represent gymnastics today, so I'll just read what we have written on the sheet. "This season, the girls welcomed new coaches Christina Harstad and Aline Flan again. The team was young, with only one senior on the team this year. They had a successful season, which culminated with Olivia Dunlap qualifying for the state meet. Congratulations to McKenna Dalton, who received honorable mention for the BRC conference." So, that's girls' gymnastics.
Thank you.
And next up, we have boys' hockey, so you guys want to come up here? I'd just like to thank you for letting me be here today to talk to you guys, to represent boys' hockey, and I'm just going to spend a minute talking about our season, but first off, I'd like to thank you guys for accepting the junior varsity program that we're going to have at Hudson next year, because it's going to make a really big difference in our program, and it's going to really help us in the future at Hudson Hockey, so I'm really excited for, to see the future hockey here. And we had new coaches this year, and it just, it was really a big difference, and it was a really great season for us, and I think we ended up with like the fourth or fifth best record in Hudson history for hockey, so it was really encouraging to have that with only six seniors on the team. We had a fairly young team, and it was a really good season, and it was a lot of fun. And just another thing that I really enjoyed this year is we put together a cancer fundraiser game. It was our first-ever fundraiser game, and we raised $4,525, so that was really exciting, and these guys have a few things to say.
Coming into the season, I didn't really know what to expect. We had a young team, and last year, we had about 10 kids graduate, so I didn't know what to expect coming into the season, and we had a pretty young team. I think we had six or seven sophomores, and they really stepped up. But the thing that I liked most was we got involved in the community. Like Daniel said, we had the breast cancer awareness fundraiser game, and I think that was an eye-opener for the whole community. They all got behind us and helped us out in any way that they could. Another thing, with the new coaches, they got involved in the community and with the youth programs. We would come up to Hockey Rink on Saturdays, and we were all assigned to a youth team, and we would go to their youth practices, help them do drills, just show them what it will take to be a varsity player, and I really liked that. It was a good experience.
Hey, I'm August Newton, and well, my favorite thing about this year was when we bring youth teams up in the locker room and we kind of show them the ropes to what we thought would be the great thing. My bad. But, and they'd come to our games, and they'd sit behind the ropes, and we'd shout out to them, to make them kind of important, like, about them for coming to the game, and winning conferences is my favorite thing this year, so.
Okay, nobody from girls' hockey is here, so I'll just read their little paragraph here. "The girls finished their season with a 6 and 14 record. The team is young, with only three seniors graduating. Although they will be missed, the team looks forward to a bright future. Three girls received conference honors. First team, Sidney Squires; second team, Sarah Icabello; and honorable mention, Bailey Knight." And now we have the Radaires, I think?
Hi, I'm Emma Dunn. This is Kate Marie and Emily Richardson, and we're representing the Radaires. We had a really successful season, starting off with the Eau Claire Regis Invitational, which we won in Palm and Jazz, and at our Rice Lake competition, we also won Palm and Jazz. Then, then we had Regionals, which we competed for hip-hop for the first time in four years, which was exciting, and we competed with our jazz dance, and we were double regional champs, and went into state as representing Western Wisconsin as double regional champs, and we placed fourth in jazz and fifth in hip-hop, which we were really happy about. And we also had Danny Edman and Corinne Arndt make the All-State Dance Team. So, it was a good season. Thank you.
Boys' Swim and Dive, apparently, is not here either. "The Boys Swim and Dive Team did quite well this year. For the first time in over five years, they defeated Chippewa Falls in a dual meet. The team finished the season going 4-1 overall in the regular season in dual meets. The season was capped off with a second-place finish at sectionals and conference. Their only loss was to Eau Claire Alliance, a team that finished third overall at state. Two team records were broken this year: 500-yard freestyle by Willie Skinner, and the 200 freestyle relay by August Jorgensen, Miles Townsend, Sawyer Arnt, and Willie Skinner." Next year, we'll bring the return of four, of the four juniors who made it to the state meet this year, who are August Jorgensen, Miles Townsend, Sawyer Arnt, and Willie Skinner. We have wrestling now.
Hello, I'm Elliot Mottur. That's Dema, Dema Hoxford, Derek Schenner, and Austin Kosky. Our wrestling team had another awesome season. We had our largest team ever, ever. We held the state's number-five ranking, and we had 12 of our 14 starters named an all-conference team for a second and a third. And we also sent four kids to state with a school-record three-state place winners. Our coaches are extremely dedicated and work endlessly to provide us with opportunities. We'd like to thank everyone for the best fans in the Northwest area of Wisconsin.
Okay, I think, did we miss anybody? Hopefully not. Just a few blips here at the bottom. We did, that, that Dan Trupicio did miss, was we did visit the middle school students as the seniors exit out. We are trying to transition the middle school kids into the AMP group and getting them involved. So, by doing that, we did go visit the middle school in February. There was this group and probably, what, 15 or 20 middle schoolers that did listen to us, so we are now trying to get that grade, those grade levels involved with us. I know Dan wouldn't, as humble as he is, he would not tell you, he was a finalist for the Wisconsin Player of the Year for boys' hockey, so I did want to add that in for, for Dan Trupicio, so. That's a huge honor. Also, Sidney Squires was selected to the All-State Girls Hockey Team, and I do believe they did mention Danny Edman, and Corinne Arndt was named to the All-Chair and Palm Team at the All-State Dance Team. As of today, this morning, it was official that we did announce for a new girls' hockey coach, who we are extremely excited to have on board. His name is Greg Gamache. Some of you may remember him, but we are excited to have him on board, so please welcome Greg Gamache, who's not here. We just decided this, this afternoon early, so. Anyway, seniors, we will miss you. We are trying to transition from winter. I feel like we're still in it, because we have not had a spring yet. We are four weeks out in the spring season of rescheduling activities for the last four weeks. So, if you see a bus out in the middle of the road waiting for kids, the event was probably canceled, so just tell them to go on and wait till next month. So, anyway, we look forward to an exciting spring. We're already off and running with track and indoor, so we will report back to you in June and let you know of all the exciting things that have happened. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Madam Chair and Board Members, the spring April 2 election results for our school board are now final. You will remember that we had preliminary results on April 2, late in the evening, and now those results have been canvassed, and we have final results. So, this is, happened this morning, so this is hot off the press. So, the first two candidates with the most votes will take two vacant seats on Hudson School Board, starting in May, and those candidates are Jamie Johnson, who received 2,121 votes; second is Bruce Hanson, who received 1,997 votes, followed by Jeanette Coons, 1,780 votes, and Jim Shrock, 854 votes. So, certainly, we thank all four of the candidates for their interest in serving and giving their time and energy and expertise to the Hudson School Board, and we will also welcome Bruce Hanson and Jamie Johnson to their seats in May. So, I would like to invite Jamie, who happens to be in the audience, to come forward and address the board, and congratulations, Jamie, and we look forward to having you, obviously, join our board very soon.
Thank you, Mary, and I just want to say thanks to the people of the district for participating in the election. It's quite a trial. I want to commend Jim Shrock and Jeanette Coons, who also ran and ran good campaigns, and I know that it was, it took courage to run for the office, and I want to commend members of German... courage to run for the office. I want to commend Members German and Kaiser Schott for their service. I guess when people have told me, you know, congratulations on the results, they've also said, now the real work begins. But what I think is a plus is that I know all of the returning board members on either personal contact or professional, previous professional relationships. So I think that that's a plus and that I'm not stranger to the board members or to the district in that it's good to be able to put the volunteering that I've done as a parent and a community member now to work as a school board member. I look forward to working with each of you and serving this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Next on the superintendent's report, the United Way contributions?
Well, I was going to just step back and make a comment about Bruce Hanson, who wanted to be here this evening, but he happens to be flying in from out of town. He's on business. And he may be able to come to the board meeting later, depending upon the flight. So if he's able to join us, we'll stop and have him welcome, welcome him and have him greet the board as well. So congratulations to Bruce, too. All right, now move on to the United Way, some information about United Way of St. Croix Valley. We reported earlier the results of how much money our staff contributed to United Way this year. $22,694. Certainly very significant funds and contributions by our staff who value the United Way and how they support programs for those in need in our community. They not only support just people in need in our community, they also support Hudson School District programs. And United Way takes 50% of those funds and gives, about 50%, and gives those back to the district in the form of grants. And so I know that last year, that those grant dollars went to the Hudson High School School Peer Helpers and to the elementary schools' Angel Fund. And I know they have submitted applications again this year for the $10,000-plus dollars. So the decisions have not yet been made. But again, we certainly look forward to having United Way support programs within our own school community.
Any questions from board members? Comments? Thank you to our staff and to the United Way for contributing back to our district in many ways. Certainly, those funds will help out in those areas. So thank you, staff and United Way. We'll move on to recognition of Mark and Pat for their service to the board.
And as we know, we have two board members. This is their last official monthly board meeting that they will be attended, attending, and certainly they will be missed. Pat German has served on the board for three years. She served on the Personnel Committee during that time, on the Learning and Program Development Committee. And for three years, each of the years that she served, she was the WASB delegate at the state convention. So thank you to Pat for that. And there will be somebody that needs to be that delegate in the future. You know, Pat has really proved herself in her tenure on the board to be a learner. And she started that from the very beginning when she was very interested in going to each of our schools and spending time touring the schools, spending time with the principals, learning about our programs. And so she's invested a lot of her time in the work of the district. And I've seen her over this period of time thoroughly preparing. She is very knowledgeable about our programs and the things that have happened during her tenure and beyond, and very supportive of those. She asks good questions. And she's taken a lot of her time, her personal time, beyond just board meetings, to find out information. You know, she is a very strong advocate for students and staff. And I certainly thank Pat for her service to our school district, to our students, to staff, and myself as well. And I appreciate your support for those three years.
Other board member comments for Pat?
Excuse me. Pat, just really appreciate your give back, you know, service in the community, your involvement on the board. It's been fun working with you. And, you know, I just, I value your input and thanks for being part of this. And thanks for investing in our, in our district.
Thank you, Brian. Other board members? Dan?
Couple of comments, Pat. Thanks for your years of service. And I think what especially has impressed me about your service on the board is you've really dug in and learned what it takes to be a good school board member. And that's time. And so I appreciate your work. I've, you know, been to the convention a few times and you being the delegate. And I know that takes quite a bit of time to, you know, learn all the resolutions and what's going on down Milwaukee. So appreciate your efforts there as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Mr. Kaiser Schott?
There we go. Got the mic. Pat, just sort of, you know, to echo what my colleagues have said. I mean, you've been a terrific board member colleague. I've really enjoyed serving with you. I think you've been on the Personnel Committee with me since the start. I certainly enjoyed that. And you have put in the work. And I must say, you're much a quicker study than I was during my first term on the board. You've really grasped some really difficult topics, I think, very well. And I'm going to miss you. Best of luck.
Thank you, Mark. Pat, I have one, I have two things that I thought about when I thought about your service to the board. And one of them was passion. And the other was your willingness to dig in. And you saw that in your work. You came into this job during a very challenging time, when emotions were very high. And I appreciated how much you dug in to try to gain better understanding so you could perform your role as a school board member. So thank you very much for your service.
Thanks, Pat, for willingness to be involved in the board in the past. And I know that it takes dedication, effort and resilience to be in this position. So thank you for your service. Good luck in whatever you do from here out. Just relax. Enjoy yourself.
Thank you, Sandy. Pat, is there anything that, did you have any words that you would like to say?
Well, I would like to thank the community for voting me in. I was honored and humbled to have served on this board. I've also, I was quite humbled in the beginning to just listen and to learn and to realize that my perception when I came in was not right about the community. And I was glad that I listened. And I was able to go through all the schools, meet all the principals, meet many teachers, our staff. I've been honored to be a part of Hudson High School, Hudson Middle School and the Hudson Grade Schools. This community, people really work together. They, and when we work, listen and communicate, this will continue to grow. And I want to thank everybody that works so hard. Pointed out that I worked, but I mostly listened and watched, asked a lot of questions. And everybody was patient. And I thank all of you board members for taking time to, to wait for me to ask the questions and to be a part. And I was very honored to be a part of this group for three years. And.
Thank you, Pat. Mary?
Moving on to Mark Kaiser Schott. He has served on the board for 12 years. He has served as Vice President, Treasurer and Clerk over that tenure. Currently, he is on the Finance, has been on the Finance Committee. He has been Chair of the Personnel Committee for much of his tenure. And he's served on the Facilities and Grounds Committee. He's also served on the Policy Committee when we had that committee and on the Transportation Committee. Mark is one of the two remaining board members who were here about this time eight years ago that selected me as superintendent. I think of Mark as coming from strong values and conviction. He's not afraid to take a stand, even if it's different from other board members and myself as well. But when he does, he listens first and then expresses his opinion. He has a great sense of humor. And I know sometimes when we're in the challenging times, he helps us get that in perspective with that humor. I valued his counsel over the years and particularly in the area of personnel, where we've had numerous talks. We just did again this week. And he always has good advice. So again, like Pat, he is a very strong advocate for our students and staff. And he will be missed. And thank you so much for your service and contribution for those, those many years on the board. It's a lot of dedication to serve, to have that length of tenure.
Thank you, Mary. Board member comments? Dan?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure where to start, Mark. As I look at the list of positions you've held, how did you not become president? Did that slip through the cracks or what?
I think it was the wisdom of the board.
Anyway, I think Mark has served admirable service for this board, very dedicated board member. And probably the most, the thing that I remember or appreciate the most about Mark is he's grown as a very effective board member over time. He's done his homework and he's, you've become very articulate, I've noticed, as you've matured as a board member. So in voicing your opinions and your positions. And I haven't, we haven't always agreed on different issues. But the fun thing about, you know, working with most of the people on this board is that, you know, we've been able to, you know, walk away at the end of the day as friends and, you know, continue to do our job as we're supposed to do on the board. So, Mark, thanks again for, for years of service.
Thank you, Dan. Other board members? Pat?
Mark, you were either on my right or on my left. So we had our little chuckles. I thank you for all of your help and your advice and your counsel as I would ask questions. What's this? Help me with this computer. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat. Other board members? Mr. Bell?
Well, Mark, we're really going to miss you. And I've really, I've really enjoyed working with you on the board. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for you and I value your opinion. And although, you know, we, like all the board, we don't always agree. I really just, I always wanted to kind of see where you stood on things. And I value your input and your sense of humor. And, you know, I'm personally really going to miss you on the board. And wish you luck. And thanks for your service.
Thank you, Brian. Sandy?
Yeah, Mark, a long time, 12 years. That's a big share of your life. So thank you for that. And again, as I said to Pat, dedication, effort and resilience are what you really need to sit in one of these chairs. And obviously, you've been here 12 years, so you must have shown that. Good luck in whatever you do from now on. And as I said to her, just relax. Don't think anything about what's going on here. Just go out and enjoy yourself. Put it all behind you. Thank you.
Madam President, could I, could I say a word?
Of course.
Okay. Just break the protocol here a little bit. But Mark and I have been together for longer than anyone else at this table, right? Yeah. And I know why you haven't been president. No, we always, we always refer to you as, as a maverick. And mavericks are best, not as leading the group. But are you ever a maverick? And certainly, you have caused me, over the years, to step up from the very beginning. And you can probably remember some of the causes. And I had to really work hard to get you to agree to something. So anyway, thank you, Mark. Miss you.
Well, thank you, Sandy. Now I get to, Nancy, now I get to follow that commentary. Mark, not many of us can say that we've served on the school board for over a decade. Certainly 12 years is an extensive amount of service. And thank you very much for that tenure. Enthusiasm is something that I would put behind your name. You're a very vocal and passionate advocate for what you believe is right for the district. And I want to thank you for that. I also got to serve on both Facilities and Grounds and Personnel with you and really appreciated the proactive and solution-oriented approach that you would have as we would come to some of the challenges that we had, specifically financial. And I appreciate how much research and work you put into bringing good solutions forward during tough times. So I think it goes without saying that you served during some very tough financial times for our district as well as controversial times. And I thank you for your leadership. You brought HSD 2025 to many of us who hadn't served during that time. And I appreciate all your work. So thank you. Comments?
Your mic isn't on.
There we go. Yeah, 12 years, I can't put the button right. Well, I'm the one that really wants to extend some thank yous. First, I guess, starting to the citizens of Hudson for granting me the privilege of serving them these past 12 years. It really has been one of the more gratifying experiences of my life. And I do thank them. I want to thank the Hudson School District community, administrators, principals, teachers, support staff, food service workers, custodians, crossing guards, everyone. Everyone that have had the privilege to come across my 12 years has really played an important role in our students' education. We have a wonderful educational community here in Hudson. And everyone is an important part of that. And I've just been impressed with all the people that I've had, had the privilege to meet, serving our students. And how about our students? What a tremendous group of young people we have in this community. We just had our winter sports and other recognitions. It's my favorite part of the meeting. And it's just astounding. Every month, I'm just constantly impressed by our students' contributions in athletics, academics, community service. It's really just been an honor and a privilege to serve them. I really think they might be the next greatest generation. So it's been my privilege. To my colleagues at this table, probably some of the most dedicated, hardworking, professional, and quite frankly, interesting people that I've had the privilege to associate with. And I do mean that sincerely. It's the passion, energy and your wit and humor that you've brought has just been, just been tremendous. It's made this more often than not, just pure joy. I'm going to miss you all very much. Lastly, but not least, of course, my family. You don't put in 12 years at this and do it well without some personal sacrifice and the family time. And I know my wife Debbie's put up with a lot of late dinners and rescheduling and huge piles of paperwork that drive her crazy. As well as my children, Joey and Marina, they've also, I've been on the board when they were in school. And so, you know, there's only so much time in the day. And they were always very supportive. And I couldn't have done it without them. So it's really, it's really been a tremendous experience. And thanks once again to everyone for making it possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark and Pat. Board members, before we move to the report section, I see that Mr. Hanson did make it in. So Mary, did you?
Bruce Hanson, welcome. And I did announce earlier that you received the second amount of votes, that they were canvassed this morning. So congratulations. And Bruce will join Jamie on the board in, at the first board meeting of the month in May. And so Bruce, congratulations. We invite you to come up and address the board.
Been on the road for the last couple of days. So anyway, really excited to get up there. Look forward to bringing a smile. Tonight's not about me, it's about you guys. So thank you very much for the service that you guys have brought forward. And I can only hope that I can bring my skill set and help continue to advance the district forward. So thanks a lot. And I look forward to having some fun.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay, we're in the report section of the agenda. I'll turn it over to Sandy with environmental partnership, Holton Elementary.
Thank you.
St. Joseph Township and UW River Falls.
Holton is living HSD 2025 in many ways through their collaborative work in outdoor learning and gardening. With us tonight is Principal Ann Mitchell, a district champion and leader in the area of environmental sustainability, and Ann will introduce the outstanding team she has brought with her this evening.
And this is only part of the team, but we'll start with Emmy Leeson, a fifth grader at Holton. We have a couple of teachers here tonight, Heather Bowle and Joanne Augustine over here, fifth grade teachers at Holton. Sandy Matson is our master gardener. Without her, this would not be possible, you'll hear about that. Lynn Leaders is a parent representative, and she also is our liaison to St. Joe Township and the planning they're doing. Tony Rambo over here, Lisa's husband, is going to be putting up a low ropes course for us soon. And Heidi Leeson, there she is, another community member from our committee. There are more that weren't able to come tonight, but we wanted to be sure you knew the representation is widespread. In case you're not familiar with Holton, this is an aerial view. You'll see we are a rural setting with ample green space. In order to maximize the access and the learning that we have, the opportunity to enjoy, we formed this outdoor learning space committee. And if you look on the far right of that photo, that's very close to where the St. Croix River Crossing will come to our property. So we're planning ahead and anticipating some of the impact that might have in a positive way.
So although we have plenty of green space, as parents, we want new, bright, bold things for our children. So in 2010, we started collecting some of that information from parents. We surveyed parents, we then went on to survey our students to see what they really wanted in their outdoor spaces. And then we continued on to survey our teachers to see what they would like for their outdoor learning spaces, and how we can combine all of those into, and tie into the curriculum. So in 2010, we had our information, we developed the outdoor learning space committee, and we started with our vision to provide a framework to go by. So the vision is to connect with nature and our community to promote care, learning, creativity, and fun. From there, we set priorities in planning and developed a five-year plan.
This is the fifth spring. We're starting tomorrow.
You're optimistic.
The St. Croix Valley Master Gardeners have supported us with grants every spring. We've built raised beds, and we've planted a prairie, and we've got Three Sisters Garden, whatever. We've got many, many, a huge variety of things. The three parts of my role in this is that we have a garden club that meets about 36 kids during their noon recess once a week. Each grade, each classroom has a planting project of their own that they start and follow through, and our three committee is part of the composting that recycles all the fruit and vegetable waste from snacks and the cafeteria, and we produce mini buckets of compost each year. Prairie restoration, we restored a prairie on that very, very first year, one acre of prairie on that east side of our campus. And the garden vegetables, your nutrition committee in your district is so fantastic. She emails me, we need more peppers and more radishes, and they use the products from our garden in the cafeteria. It's fantastic.
Every grade has their own project, their own garden project. So the kindergarten grows pumpkins. The first grade does mostly vegetables. The second grade does cannibal watermelon and cucumbers. Third does a pizza garden, which is, I think, like tomatoes and that's all I can really remember. Fourth grade does corns, beans, and squash, which is also known as the Three Sisters. And fifth grade, my grade, does a rain garden. So we will be starting the rain garden next week. A rain garden is a garden that you plant where rain collects, usually in low areas or small valleys. The prairie restoration and maintenance is in one of the next slides.
The St. Croix Valley Master Gardeners have a special project for 30 gardens this year, and we are trying four different varieties of eight different crops, and then we'll choose the variety that does the best and report back to them. They've supplied the seeds and the plants for us to use, so it's a super opportunity. Thanks.
At Holton, we have a lot of fun planting and taking care of our gardens. Sorry. In the picture, fifth grade is harvesting their corn that they planted last spring as fourth graders, so that was part of the Three Sisters project. We sell our vegetables for fundraising.
We use the prairie and other outdoor areas to, as a way to engage students in the curriculum as well as in nature.
This year, the current fifth grade has done soil testing, seed sorting, transplanting, and science experiments on the land. We have also done poems and observations of the prairie and written them in journals.
That picture was the three stages of composting. The kids, the R3 committee, dumps the vegetable and fruit wastes into our three bin compost bin. We turn it over, that's the first thing the kids want to do, is turn over the compost when they get out there each time. And the third picture is screening, so it's in a usable way that is ready to go in the garden. So it's just a great process. Thanks.
In fact, when you start composting with kindergarteners and fruits and vegetables, especially worm composting, they want to feed the worms. So we had to re-educate to eat the fruits and vegetables and just put the waste with the worms. This is a current project, where we are right now. As she said, weather permitting, garden club starts up tomorrow. Something we're kind of excited about is the partnership with a couple of other school districts in harvesting the Blazing Star native plant that is located quite prolifically on the construction zone of the St. Croix River Crossing. We don't want to lose that native plant, so we're working in partnership with the DNR and a couple of other school districts to put seeds, plugs, and plants in our own prairie. We also have a farm-to-school initiative that we recently kicked off with Healthier Together statewide grant and St. Croix County grant. Karen Hansen at Hudson Hospital is a partner with us, and Threshing Table Farm, a CSA near the Star Prairie area, helps to, we're a drop point for one of their CSA partners, the people that buy the shares. And then the last one on this list with the current projects is our long-range partnership with St. Joe Township, and Lynn will talk a little bit about that in a couple of slides.
So these are a few highlights from our long-range plan. We've already spoken to some of those, but one, including the low ropes course, which we hope to have implemented by next fall. Another one that we'd like to highlight is the Nature and Fitness Trail, which we plan to connect with the Loop Trail, which is part of the St. Croix River Crossing plan. So as we've mentioned, that five-year plan, we are working closely with our neighbors, St. Joseph Township, community members, the federal government. It's a great opportunity for Holton as a school with the St. Croix River Crossing. We have lots more opportunities and lots more partnerships and people to work with. So I've been attending some of the St. Joseph Township outdoor recreation planning, and we've been helping with their plan. So Holton has four pages of their 21 pages. So it's exciting that we have these partnerships, and we have common goals, and so working together with our community is going to benefit all of us.
One of those common goals actually is to increase access to the public green spaces in St. Joe Township and St. Croix County, and to maximize learning for the public. The Somerset School District Curriculum Director and Sandy and I are talking about partnering on offering a K-12 course where the St. Croix River Crossing is the context, but we teach with an inquiry or project-based approach, so that we're helping to team with school districts that are affected by the St. Croix River Crossing.
And so just to wrap up, the vision for our outdoor learning space is to connect with nature and our community to promote care, learning, creativity, and fun. Questions? Any questions for us?
Board member questions? Mrs. Mitchell on her group?
Thank you so much. We really appreciate the collaboration with the community and the work that you're doing to reach out to other groups and connect our schools with those groups. I think it's a particularly interesting time to be doing this project with the St. Croix River Crossing, and that'll give Holton a unique opportunity to connect with some of those departments. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the report section is health insurance, and I'll turn it over to Tim.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna have Brian Owen from Gallagher Benefit Services. Brian is the area vice president for Gallagher Benefit Services, and then Mark Cumlin from my office, who's been working, we've all been working on looking at some different ways to operate health insurance. Bob Hogseth, who is also involved in this, wasn't able to make it tonight, and so, but we've been looking at different ways to control healthcare costs and to, and really, one of the steps that we thought, going back a couple of years ago, was when we got to a point where we had good claims data, that we would start to look at partial self-funding for health insurance. And partial self-funding is really, is partially self-insuring. So the, kind of a very brief overview is, in this case, we looked at, we'll get some proposals on it, and what we looked at is a deductible at the, at our level, at the district level of $100,000 per person, and then looking at stop-loss insurance that would kick in after the individual hit that amount. Generally, we've had, when we look at our history, we've had a handful of people that ever go over that $100,000, so it's pretty rare that we see that happen. Below the $100,000, the district really pays those claims, and rather than the insurance company, rather than having a fully insured plan where we pay a premium, the district actually pays those plans. So if we look at the first slide, and again, the Finance Committee and Personnel Committee have reviewed this information prior, and this really hasn't changed, same information we presented. We had three proposals on the partial self-funding, and so what we're looking at mainly is focusing on the total fixed costs, and that's under A, and so $1,131,000 from Health Partners, $948,000 from Preferred One, and then Benefit Plans, Plan Administrators, $953,000. And then we also look at maximum liability to the district, because in partial self-funding, there is some risk that the district takes on, because if you had a high claim year or you have several people hit $100,000 level, there is some risk of that happening, and the claims fluctuate up and down, obviously, along with the, as people move through annually. So we're looking at under C, the Section C, under liability on a maximum, looking at the annual Health Partners, that is the maximum annual exposure to the district, $9353,000. And that would be the maximum, and Brian can talk a little bit about how often he sees a district or a company that's self-insuring hit that maximum. Brian, maybe I'll have you talk a little bit about that.
Thank you very much. I'd be remiss if I didn't start on my way here, if I could indulge the board for 15 seconds. I have a 14, 12, and 10-year-old, so when I got to the conversation with my 10-year-old daughter Lily, she reminded me to tell the board hello and have a good meeting, and she was anxious for me to get home. So with that, if you're looking at the liability aspect of it, the key things to focus under C are on the expected costs, which include all your fixed costs for whatever vendor that you choose to pay the administration of claims, provide stop-loss insurance. Included within that is the expected claim cost, and what we've done is worked with our underwriters and actuaries, along with the different vendors, to make a best-guess estimate as it relates to what we anticipate claims would be for the district in the upcoming 2013 and 2014 plan year. So under expected, A plus the B1, if you look, that's your fixed cost, plus also the expected claims. As Tim alluded to, your maximum liability is taking those same fixed costs, and you're buying reinsurance on top of the expected cost of about a 25% corridor. So the risk associated with that is up to that maximum liability amount. I can say that I've been in the industry 24 years, and I've had one client over that particular time has hit their maximum liability, and the reason most don't is that you have individual-specific stop-loss of $100,000 per person. So the likelihood, for example, if someone had $1 million of claims during the next plan year, the risk to the district is only that $100,000. The additional $900,000 would be paid by the reinsurance carrier, and only that $100,000 goes towards that expected. So again, it's basing that premise or the expected claims off of past history that the district has had and trying to extrapolate and move that forward.
What we wind up with, the reason we're able to garner a lot of savings off of partially self-funding versus a fully insured plan is that we wind up cutting out or reducing different costs such as insurance, insurance company profit, administrative costs from insurance companies, there's certain taxes that are on fully insured plans, and then there's claims processing. And so with those items, they all get reduced proportionately with a much lower, because we're paying, again, we're paying those claims that are under $100,000 per person, so those are not being charged to us through premium charges. And that's where we really wind up leveraging savings. And again, savings, as Brian talked about, the likelihood of hitting the maximum liability is fairly low, but again, it can happen. There are times when that can happen, as Brian mentioned, but over the long term, it should result in savings. Brian, can you talk a little bit about some of the companies, percentage of companies that are self-funding now, that are fully self-funding or partially self-funding?
When we look at organizations, districts, and also private and public sector of organizations your size or greater, you typically see 50 to 60%, and as districts or companies grow, the more likelihood that they are of being self-insured. A number of districts that we work with have moved to self-insurance and seen significant savings, and that seems to be the trend as claims costs have seemed to, not as a great fluctuation, being able to set reserves and take those savings and build those back into the plan. So we're seeing more and more school districts now wanting to take the opportunity to take those savings, because if you're fully insured, the risk is all on the health insurance plan. There are built-in profit margins associated with that, and any savings they have, they put back into the plan, it's theirs. When you have the opportunity, again, to review claims costs and activity over the past three years, those savings come directly back to the district.
And so when we look at, usually, we're used to looking at this in terms of how much our premium's going to go up. With partial self-funding, you create what's called an equivalency rate, and we're looking right now at that equivalency rate, that would be between a 4 and a 7% increase. If we looked at the upper end of that, let's say it's 7%, that would be lower, that would keep, premiums would actually be lower than they were back in 2006, 2007. So it's, we've been able to leverage a lot of savings over the past couple of years, and this is kind of the next step towards continuing to manage healthcare costs. Again, developing that rate, what happens is the district would put in dollars, employees pay a portion for their health insurance costs, those dollars go into a fund, and then those dollars are used to pay for the claims. The claims data, if you look under B1, the expected claims, 6.5 million, that was developed. We use Health Partners claims data because that's, they're the insurance company that has the data for us, and Gallagher Benefits reviewed those claims, and they feel that that's a reasonable number to use in developing. that's a reasonable number to use in developing our rates. So, again, the purpose tonight is just to put this approach in front of you, and again, many of you have heard it already, but we want to make sure, and then going forward, in May, we'd bring back the final recommendation, so that we can move forward to implement. One other piece that we have, we'll go to the next slide, Diane, is where we had been working on, working towards offering a high deductible plan option, and that, right now, with the federal healthcare legislation, there's a lot of unknowns, and we feel it's best, rather than switching and then switching again, we'd like to spend the next several months studying the impact of the federal healthcare legislation, because there's still a lot of unanswered questions from the experts out there, so we want to be able to go back and determine what is the best type of high deductible plan to put in place. But prior to the federal healthcare legislation, we were working on aligning things, to get things set up, so that we could move to that, and so, we have a transition year, where we're moving our deductible, plan deductible, from a calendar year to a fiscal year. And so, what happens in the one-year transition is that folks would have, ordinarily, they may have to satisfy a one-year deductible in six months, and then it resets again beginning in July. And so, under this proposal that we're looking at, we'd be looking at doing an 18-month deductible, so folks would get a credit for the deductible that they had already satisfied in the first six months, and so that's already as well built, that's built into that rate range, or that equivalency rate range of 4 to 7%. So, I guess we'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Board member questions or comments for Tim?
Sandy, so you're gonna bring this back as a proposal for us to vote on, right?
Yes.
To decide to go ahead with it?
Yeah.
When you do that, can you bring back that nifty little paper that you gave us at the Personnel Committee?
Oh.
The one that showed the exact savings, you know, that chart?
Sure, yeah, we sure can.
That was the best piece of paper you handed to us that night?
Okay, sure.
And it really showed what was happening, and I think it would be really beneficial to all of us to see that.
Great, yeah, we'll definitely do that, and that was the one, yeah, Bob Hogseth that provided that and walked you through, we did a little exercise, and so, yeah.
Yeah, it was really good, explained it very well, so thank you.
Okay, sure.
Other board member questions or comments for Tim?
Mr. Kaiser-Schott. Just really a comment, I agree with Sandy, I think she's referring to this sheet here, is that the ones? Which shows nearly $800,000 in savings. I just really enthusiastically endorsed this partial self-funding. It really looks like a win-win for the district, significant savings, and I think it's where we should go.
Thank you, Mark. Pat?
I would also thank Tim for all of his work in contacting and looking into the insurance, the different ones that I've been encouraging you, and you're still looking at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Other board member comments or questions for Tim? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
The next item in our report section is number 5.3C, Support for High School Learning for the Future. Sandy and Cory.
You'll see one of us is missing tonight. Dave is on assignment in Madison, so he didn't make it back in time, as expected. At a recent board meeting, Sandy, Dave, and I proposed, and you approved, the reorganization of learning services and student services into what we're now calling learning support services. Even though not official till next year, we've already begun our work and moving our work forward in implementing a more collaborative, learning-focused support system for our schools. So, tonight, we wanted to share with you some of the work we're doing with High School Learning for the Future. Principal love and the Hudson High School staff have really moved this initiative forward, and we are working hard as a team from the district office on how to support High School Learning for the Future, and increasing our support for that rollout. So, this visual that you see on this first slide really kind of takes our visual that you saw of our departments reorganizing into one, and how that might translate into support to the buildings. So, the strategic vision of Hudson, or HSD 2025, learning support services in the school support for our Hudson students, and then at each level of the school district, how we might do that. In particular, tonight, we'll focus on High School Learning for the Future. In future meetings, we may also be providing to you how we are gonna move this forward with elementary and middle school level work as well, but tonight, we're gonna focus on High School Learning for the Future. You've seen a number of presentations on advisories and transitions, academies especially, in our project-based learning at the high school, so you kind of get now a visual of how this is breaking down, and how we are gonna start delivering our strategic vision through our Hudson High School Learning for the Future initiative. So, I'm gonna have Sandy kind of start with some details.
And as you can see in this, in that slide, the initiative for HSD 2025 really is a PK-12 initiative, and as Cory said, we're gonna focus on high school tonight, but just realize that we're working on different components in the different levels, and over the next few months, we want to share with you what's going on at all those levels, so you can start really seeing how HSD 2025 is moving forward very strategically. So, in this slide, you can see again your GLOs for HSD 2025, and so the vision and the GLOs of HSD 2025 really are driving the work of the High School Learning for the Future, and the delivery that takes place is those four components, the advisories, the transitions, academies, and the project-based learning. And so, for example, when you look at specifically at advisories, they're making very important adult-to-student connections, while at the same time, students are working on teamwork, problem-solving, and developing leadership skills. And if we look at another example with the academies, the academies will be focusing very much on the foundational skills that are necessary for HSD 2025, but at the same time, they're personalizing learning that will prepare students for post-secondary success, and that's going to occur in the academies through some explicit career exploration. So, High School Learning for the Future is also built around other best practices. So, again, for like the academies, breaking down a large high school into those smaller academies, that would be another example. Some of the integrated and relevant learning would be another example of best practices that are also coming to fruition through HS, through High School Learning for the Future.
So, on the next slide, you'll actually see some examples of how we're beginning, how Sandy and David are beginning to change how we support this work of High School Learning for the Future, and you've seen this slide around the development of the academies, and I've heard information about rolling out the Health and Human Services Academy and Hudson High Tech Academy beginning in 2014 and 15. So, as we were beginning to talk and work with the high school in a little different way, based on our reorganization, we felt we needed to come up with a more supportive or increased support for this work, and what we've kind of landed on in collaboration with the high school is taking our team and each of us having a much more active role in supporting the development and implementation of the academy. So, for example, Dave will be more tightly aligned with the Hudson High Tech Academy, participating more directly in the development and implementation of that work. I will personally take on supporting the work of the Health and Human Services Academy, and one of the things we've recently done, last Wednesday, we went down to La Crosse and saw their Health and Human Services, works they're doing with Gunderson Lutheran Hospital and the Mayo Clinic, as far as giving students opportunities to work with physicians in the La Crosse School District. Sandy will kind of, by, Sandy will over, kind of be involved with the two of us in working with both of these, so as we bring back individual information from these, we can then collaborate together and make some decisions about how do we support the rollout and development and implementation of these two academies to start, and we envision this to just continue to develop into our support with the other three academies as they become part of our online implementation. So, these are just some tangible examples of how we're changing our roles and work in supporting more actively and directly the work of the high school in this work as it develops.
And as you can expect, especially with the two academies rolling out, there'll be some adjusting with some of the curriculum pieces, maybe some new courses that we examine, the project-based learning concepts, so that's where my hands get involved in both of those as it moves forward. Part of our presentation is strategically placed that we are before an action item dealing with staffing, where you probably have seen that there are some staffing components that are directly linked to High School Learning for the Future, and so in your packet, we also included an organizational chart for the high school that will help you see how those positions align as well, and how we expect the different support pieces to align with the work that's being done, as well as, and there's two job descriptions, one for the dean and one for the High School Learning for the Future facilitator. So, we'll take questions if there are any.
Board member questions or comments? Mr. Bell?
No, I'm gonna approve all of this. I did ask for some more detail, which was provided here, so I had one question in the Finance Committee, and so, I got the information I needed.
Okay, thank you. Any other board member questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move on to citizens' requests to speak for non-agenda items. Do we have any items, Diane? No? Okay, okay. Next on to our topics for action. I'll turn it over to Nancy.
Okay, this agenda item is in reference to the 2013-2014 staffing proposal. Several meetings ago, the members of the Personnel Committee considered the administrative process for determining 2013-2014 staffing proposal, and the process included criteria such as student enrollment growth, district goals and initiatives associated with HSD 2025, legal requirements, safety, operational support, and other criteria additions, staffing additions, as well as reductions and reallocations were considered. The process also included several steps, which began at the district department and building levels, and included more than one meeting together with all principals. After preliminary costing, the long list of staffing needs, all considered to have value, was prioritized into three tiers. Tier one, highest priority, tier two, next priority, and tier three, the least priority. The administration is asking tonight for the board's approval to move ahead on filling the positions in tier one. Timing is of the essence in order to fill the positions with the best candidates. On March 25th, the Finance Committee approved the cost impact of tier one contingent upon later review of the positions in tier one. And then, following that, on April 2nd, the members of the Personnel Committee unanimously approved the tier one positions for consideration by the board, the full board this evening. Tier one includes 16 full and part-time positions, which address staffing needs in all eight buildings. 13 of the positions are certified, and three are non-certified positions. No administrative positions are included in tier one, and actually, in tier one or tier three either. Sandy and Cory will take turns briefly addressing each of the 16 positions, and following that, Tim will follow with an overview of the preliminary costing. We'll collectively then take questions after that.
Thank you.
So, I'll start with the first three positions and just briefly give you a little bit of background on those three. Over the last four years, we've made a number of reductions in the area of special education assistance, but we've experienced some growth in some unique individual needs of students that we are obligated to meet based on federal and state law, specifically in the area of autism and students with severe cognitive disabilities, along with a couple areas in the district where we support students with significant emotional and behavioral disorders. So, you'll see those four positions there, and that is really driven by our federal requirements and our board-approved caseload guidelines that you did approve back in 2009 and '10. The second item is around the speech and language requirements for therapy that we have in the district, and again, that is another requirement of our state and federal laws that we have to file, and this is adding partial increases to a couple positions that serve our high school and middle school, as the caseloads have increased due to our growth, as well as the individual needs increasing as well. Number three is for increasing our staffing around adaptive physical education instruction, and this is really for students who require specially-designed instruction for physical education. Our students with disabilities do require the same amount of FIED as non-disabled students, and we have grown over the years here without an increase for a number of years, so we literally have not been able to schedule all the kids, and we are struggling to meet the legal requirement, so this would give us a little bit of a relief at the middle school and high school levels. So, number four, shifting gears a bit, we've, you heard a little bit about the dean of students piece just a minute ago, and this is a non-administrative position, and really, our intention with this position is to support the principal and associate principals at the high school level for their role they need to have in leading our High School Learning for the Future, and the dean of students position would help us deal with student issues. Many of you have kind of understand the role that the dean has in investigations and student discipline, and you've seen some of those things, acting as board members in expulsion proceedings. So, this would free up the associates and the principal to continue to be focused on moving our initiatives forward and provide a second person that can assist with those student issues that do come up. The fifth position is a social worker position for the elementary level. Currently, we have a .5 position at the high school and a .5 position at the middle school, and really no support at the elementary level, and when you have about 2,800 students at each level, we're being challenged more and more every year with needs of families that we're seeing, and with students who are dealing with crisis homelessness, some challenges in meeting their basic needs at home, and this position will allow us to add support at all six elementary schools, in addition to what we're trying to do at the middle school and high school level. That was very fast. We have a lot of positions to cover, so I'll hand it over to Nancy, or Sandy, and you can follow up with questions at a later point.
All right. Position number six, the math intervention teacher. This request supports student learning needs in the area of math, which is part of our RTI requirements. Currently, there is no tier-two math support position at the middle school. Number seven and eight, English and Social Studies, .4. This is mainly due to enrollment. Our ninth grade rolling in is higher than our current numbers, and so we need some additional support there. Number nine, the orchestra teacher. Next year, there will be two performance groups at the high school. We're finally rolling up, so there'll be two performance groups, so this will allow our traveling teacher between the middle school and the high school to stay full-time at the high school, and then have another part-time position at the middle school. Number 10, the health teacher. This is a one-year request. We're moving 11th grade health to 10th grade, so there's kind of a doubling up for one year. This will result, though, in the junior and senior year for an additional slot then for students for additional elective, so we're looking forward to making that transition. German teacher, number 11, again, due to increased enrollment, as well as the number 12, the tech ed teacher at the high school as a .2. But you'll notice, too, the tech ed teacher is offset with some reallocation dollars as well. Number 13, the High School Learning for the Future. This supports, as we've been saying this evening, High School Learning for the Future. This position would be key in establishing business and business and community partnerships, as well as creating some of those career-focused opportunities that are related to things like mentoring for students. The coach will also provide some important support to teachers throughout the district, and currently, oh, no, 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 I've flipped to another one, sorry, 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 related to mentoring. Number 14, then, the instructional coach. The coaches provide important support to teachers, and currently, there are three elementary instructional coaches and one high school position that is also an instructional coach. The middle school currently has a halftime position, and this would then bring them up to the same level with a 1.0 FTE for their staffing. The reading teacher, number 15, at the middle school, again, in order to meet our needs with students that need some additional support at the middle school, we're requesting a .5 addition.
Lastly, on your tier-one list here is the health assistant, and this increase of about a half an hour day is really driven by the volume and the numbers we see with the number of health office visits at the middle school with increasing enrollment, and particularly in the area of the number of medication distributions we do each day, along with some unique individual health needs around diabetic situations and other seizure-type situations from a safety standpoint. So, we need to kind of catch up with the volume of- So we need to kind of catch up with the volume of needs that we are seeing at the middle school level.
Tim?
So as far as the tier-one, the highest priority that's being recommended tonight, you can see that the total cost is $464,000 in salary and wages, and that's net of a reduction, a reallocation of reductions of $71,000. If we look at tier-two, again, total costs for tier-two are $141,000, and that's net of a reduction and reallocation of $5,550, and then tier-three is a cost of $222,600. So if you look at all the tiers and all the requests that were, that were, all the different requests that were out there, it totaled to $827, about $828,000. But again, tonight, looking at the recommendation of the tier-one only. When we look at how this fits into the budget, we have some, we have some things that have been happening to our aid lately, and we use a projection model to determine what our state aid is, because of course, we don't, we don't get that information in a final format until October, where we're already four months into our fiscal year. So we use an aid projection model that's developed by Baird. A lot of different districts do use this model. And even when we plug in conservative numbers, meaning we show the different, there are different tiers of aid that go into the aid formula for school districts, and we have negatives in that aid. We show that aid going back, but the way it filters through the formula with student growth and the impact, one of the impacts I talk about on funding is the property value per pupil. That, those two things drive a lot of that formula. We still see an increase in aid projected for 2013-2014, and the aid would be enough to cover these positions.
Any questions for any of the team here?
Board member questions or comments?
Madam Chair, President.
Diane.
Question. Tim, so is the, under the tier-one, is the net the $464 minus $71,000, or is that, is $464 the net with the reallocation?
Right. $464 is the net with reallocation.
The other question I had is, I don't really have any, you know, concerns about these positions, but my question has to do with, are, in the CISA district that we're in, I know there's been times when we've sort of reached out to the district to, you know, share services and do things like that. Under what circumstances do we usually look for, you know, staff support through some type of a CISA arrangement?
Usually, it's in the area of special education. We still do have an agreement with Prescott for vision services, but as we've grown as a district, we've had numbers that really require full-time positions here, so we've had less reliance on the CISA for partial positions. And that's really, occasionally, we get some deaf and hard-hearing support, but it's really, as we've grown, less of a need to need the CISA.
So you've sort of explored that already. Okay, thank you.
Other board member questions or comments?
Just a real quick comment. I just, I guess I just want to note that I think this, you know, shows how the Hudson School District really effectively utilizes tax dollars to best serve our students. As Corey mentioned, a couple years back, when enrollments were down in some of the areas of special ed, cuts were made. And now that we have a greater need, enrollment is up, then we direct resources in that area. But the district's always been very vigilant. Nancy and her staff do a great job every year going through this. It's a very comprehensive, very time-consuming exercise to determine where the needs and priorities are, and I just, you know, I just want to note that and applaud the process.
Thank you, Mark. Any other board member questions or comments?
Yeah, I've, just one overall comment is, I'm a big fan, if we're going to have great teachers in the classroom, we have to invest in them, you know, things like the coaching and having some support with dean of students and high school learning for the future. Just like any, any great organization, you have to invest in your talent, provide them support. So I think this is a step in the right direction on that, on that point. Just, so that's my overall comment. The, my other tactical comment is, I think, just, I was just interested, like Melissa Hansen's role, is that similar to the, to the facilitator, or, you know, the role that she's been serving?
She's been doing some of the leadership currently with High School Learning for the Future. Her, she's currently a school-to-career coordinator, so because of that, she does a lot with career pathways, transcripted credit, so yes, the two will be doing quite a bit of the leadership, yes.
Thanks.
Any other board member questions or comments?
Lynn?
Yeah.
I'd like to echo Brian's comment on supporting our teachers and to continue with our tax dollars on the support that's needed until they get, you know, get this all going and up and running, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Pat. There's another board member, questions or comments? This is a topic for action, and I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Brian.
Second.
Second by Pat. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on our topics for action is the dress code for high school graduation ceremony. Mary?
We have received a request from a student who has met graduation requirements early and left for boot camp, and the student has requested to wear military dress uniform at the high school graduation instead of the traditional cap and gown. The administration recommends to the board that you consider this not as an individual request, but as a policy, so that it can be used, a policy decision that can be used into the future, instead of addressing it with one individual and possibly having another request in the future. So looking back over the history, we were able to determine in conversation with Ed Lucas and Ron Berth, and then Principal Laura Love as well, we went back about 25 years, and found that traditionally in Hudson, it has been cap and gown, and we have either not had this request, or we're not aware of any student wearing military dress. I think it's really important that the board, our community, our staff, that we recognize military service as a very noble decision that students or graduates may make to serve our country, and to do that for all of us. And whether the board chooses to continue with the traditional cap and gown, or whether the board chooses to make an exception to that policy for military dress, both of those still continue, we still continue to honor students and graduates who go into military service. So we have essentially two different choices. One is the traditional choice, which Corey's going to talk about, the experience we have obtained from other school districts, and that is the traditional cap and gown without exception. This, the high school graduation ceremony in the past has been a formal and public recognition of the work that has been done during the high school years, and really doesn't recognize what happens beyond that, other than valuing that experience that the class has together as a class, a united class. And then, the other option that you have is to make an exception, cap and gown for everyone else except for an exception for a graduate, graduating senior who is in military service to wear dress uniform. And we brought this forward to the Learning and Program Development Committee, and they considered this and have a recommendation as well. So Corey's going to add some additional information, and then Nancy is going to talk about the policy that the committee has recommended for your consideration.
So as we began to research this in an effort to have some objective information about this policy consideration, we reached out to districts in our region, and the materials you see on the screen in your board packet there identify those districts who we got responses from, and whether or not they've allowed military dress up to this point in time. Twenty-eight of the 31 that responded have not allowed that. There's some denotations in the materials where some unique considerations have been provided, for example, identification and maybe the graduation program of students who are engaging in the military or completing their training. One particular district didn't have any specific requirements for dress, including cap and gown, at their ceremony. And others, for example, might announce all students and their plans for post-secondary experiences, including military service. So you can kind of look through those Wisconsin and Minnesota districts that we were able to get answers from. In addition, at the recent committee meeting, we did share there, in one particular state, California, had had the similar request that kind of resulted in some changes in state law, and in the end, all schools in the state of California, if they meet the requirements, if a student meets the requirements for high school graduation and has completed basic training and is an active member of a branch of the U.S. Armed Forces, then they are allowed to wear their military dress for high school graduation. One last piece, we typically have regular meetings with our local providers or our local armed service recruiting stations, and we were fortunate in the last week to have met with the commanding officer and executive officers who are of the recruiting station in the Twin Cities that serves Hudson and really the five-state area. And they were, it was a really positive meeting. They're aware of the recent situation because of the media exposure. They were very understanding of the issue and actually regretted that we were dealing with this kind of a situation, because it's challenging. It's a sensitive one. But they were very clear that the issue of what's worn at a high school graduation is at the discretion of the school district and of the school board, and they really did not have any interest in affecting that decision. They, if they need to deal with a situation, they handle that privately, but they were very clear that this is your decision to make as a school board.
Moving on to the policy for consideration. Prior to this particular issue and topic, the Board of Education has not had a specific written dress code for high school graduation ceremony. It has been tradition. There have been specifications in the Hudson High School handbook, but there has not been a Board of Education policy. So we did bring forward some potential language for such a policy, which we did discuss with Learning and Program Development. I did talk with WASB prior to drafting this, this policy, and they, of course, supported the fact that it is permissible for a Board of Education to have such a policy. They said they had not really had inquiries about this particular topic, but also suggested that if the board chose to, to have such a policy and then chose further to make an exception, that, that the exception be, that the exception also contain conditions or standards around that particular exception. So what you see written here is, the committee, the board members of the committee did suggest some revisions to what we initially brought forward, and we have provided those revisions in this, the policy that is in your board material. Basically, the first paragraph just, it just talks about the purpose of the high school graduation ceremony. The second, that all members of the senior class eligible and choosing to participate in the graduation ceremony must wear the traditional cap and gown selected by the district. And then, the, the final component of the policy is around the exception. The only exception will be made for students to, for a student to wear his or her U.S. military uniform instead of the traditional cap and gown, provided the following conditions. And there are four conditions. One, that the student, or the student's parents, if the student is under 18 years of age, must submit a request in writing to the principal. Secondly, they must have completed, successfully completed, basic training and have active duty status. Thirdly, must submit to the principal written permission from his or her commanding officer to wear the military uniform in the graduation ceremony. And then, fourthly, the student must wear a dress uniform, not a utility uniform or military fatigues. So this particular policy does include the suggestions made by the board members at the Learning and Program Development Committee. So this is for your consideration and possible action tonight.
Board member questions, comments? I know it's been through a couple committees and quite a bit of discussion and committee work. Brian?
Madam Chair, just a few comments. I did review this, and so did my fellow board members in the Personnel and Learn Development Committee, and made some changes that reflect here. I'll also make a few comments on this. So first of all, this is going to happen very rarely. I think it's, I think the cases where there's even an option for this is, is a handful a year, if that. And, you know, outside of this, I do think we should find, perhaps find a way, we talked to Laura about it, you know, this is kind of outside this policy of recognizing those graduates who are going to the service, and I think we can find a way to do that and, you know, continue to look for opportunities like that during, whether it be the graduation ceremony or some other. We already do a lot of that in the high school, but we could probably, something to think about, and I know Laura was interested in that, so. So I, you know, I'm in favor of this in general, so that's, that's the, that's my board member. Just, I would like to make a comment, just personally, as serving in the U.S. military, went to the Air Force Academy. I just think in general that this is not something that, you know, I personally would do. I think that being in the military is all about fighting and winning as a team, and the team uniform for graduation is wearing a cap and gown. And being in the military, maybe this young man hasn't quite understood that yet, being in the military is, you know, I got your six, you got mine, and we're in it together. It's not about you as an individual. So that's my personal, and I just want to, I know there's been a lot of discussion in the community about this, and there's former servicemen on either side of this issue, right? So I'm supportive of it as a board member, but as the individual, I just want to share that as a former, as a former person serving in the military, so.
Thank you for your perspective. Any other board member comments or questions?
Madam Chair?
Sandy?
I also believe this is probably not going to be something that, that is going to be a policy that's used all the time. I don't foresee a lot of this happening, but I like this policy that it's a compromise between saying absolutely no, you cannot wear a uniform, and saying yes, we will let you do that. I especially like the part about wearing a dress uniform, because I cannot imagine a high school graduation in military fatigues. So I like this. I think this is a great compromise. It's a great way to settle this issue, and I commend the committee that put this much work into this.
Thank you. Pat?
I was on the committee, but Mary and Nancy and Corey, I thank you for doing the research and bringing it to us and, and more understanding about it. I, you brought in the idea of, you know, it's a group, and graduation is a group, military is a group, but yet, I do support this also in this format, and I voted yes on that, so.
Thank you, Pat. Diane?
Madam President, can I make a motion to take action approving policy 5127.9, dress code for high school graduation ceremony?
Motion made by Dan.
Second.
Second by Brian. All those, any further discussion?
Madam President, just, I just want to just throw in my two cents, this is a brief comment. I think I feel very similar to Mr. Bell, and this does sort of make me, I guess, a little uncomfortable in some ways. I kind of also consider the cap and gown to be the uniform of the Hudson graduating class, although I certainly hold military service in the very highest regard. And I guess, on balance, I'm simply going to come down to being able, you know, to defer to this student's particular wishes, and if an individual, I guess, feels that strongly about it. But once again, I do think, you know, when you talk about teamwork and what the, I like to think the graduating class is, is its team, and so I hope this is And so I hope this is a rare occurrence, but again, I will support the committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Mark. Diane, is there anyone to speak on this matter to the board?
No.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Dan, a second by Brian. Any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next on our topics for action is the lease for the relocation of ITS. Tim?
Okay. Yeah, the lease before you is, the purpose for that lease is that, is so that we can relocate IT, information, instructional technology services out of the high school so that we can convert some of that space to classroom space and gain some additional space for students. The space that they're moving into under this proposed lease is 2,080 square feet, which is what they have right now at the high school. When we look at the lease, there are some things that, and again, this lease has been reviewed by the school's attorney, Jay Squires, and there are parts of this lease that are really what we call inoperable because what we're agreeing to is a sum certain amount. And the company that we're renting from really has a template lease agreement that they use with all of their lessies, and they didn't want to get into modifying a lot of that lease. But what we have is if we focus on areas that are really driving and that are determined, probably, have you go to page two of the lease? And so, under the term, we're looking at a period of three years, 36 months, and that would be May 1 until April 30 of 2016. And the gross rentable divvies premise right above that is 2,342 square feet, and that's a, that is a, that includes common area space that gets allocated out to each lessie in the building. The rate is $11 per square foot, and it would be best known as kind of a modified gross rate, and so that's $25,762 per year, or $2146 per month. That's really the piece that determines how much the district is going to pay. As I said, some of the other language that's in there is really part of what they have for their standard lease agreement. Under number three, real estate taxes, what that's, what that language says is if real estate taxes go above the base rate of $13,895, the district would pay an additional 9.72% of those taxes over that amount. So, for example, if taxes go up $1,000, the district would pay an additional $97 for the year. If we go over, one of the things is on page 16, if we look at the language there, that's really some additional language that was added to just clarify that we're renting 2,080 square feet and that we're actually measuring differently than some of the other language in the lease. Additionally, we have Exhibit C on the lease, which shows how we've measured that space because the space is actually larger than 2,080 square feet, but they've allowed us to just pay for what we're going to use. And so again, this has been reviewed by our attorney, and we'd ask for your approval tonight so that we can continue to move on with plans to convert the current IT space in the high school into classroom space and then make the moves that are needed. Any questions?
Board members, questions for Tim? No? Okay.
Move to approve?
Motion by Brian?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're on to high school principal resignation. Mary?
Hudson High School Principal Laura Love has submitted a letter of resignation to take a position in the Middleton Cross Plains School District starting July 1. Certainly, this is a significant loss for Hudson High School, for this district, and our community. Laura has served in her position in Hudson for three years, and that's three years of very significant contribution. She has advanced HSD 2025, our strategic mission, vision, through high school learning for the future with advisories, project-based learning, freshman academy implementation that's ready for next year, and planning for the grades 10 through 12, career partnership academies to be implemented in the future. A few of her other contributions are more students at the high school learning and challenging themselves at higher levels, collaboration time for teachers, development of more teacher leaders throughout the school, and broader student opportunity and voice. I don't know another high school principal in our state who could have accomplished this much collaboratively with staff in the same period of time. So I'd invite Laura to come forward. I know she wants to speak to the board, and we have been very fortunate to have Laura's leadership, even for three years. Laura?
I have mixed emotions about leaving and taking on a new role, and as you know, and as says in the letter, wasn't considering leaving here until I got the call to take a look at a different kind of position. And the kind of position was really exciting to me, and I was encouraged by others who know of the district there and the changes that they're making in order to address the expectations from the state and federal government for public education in the future. And again, weighing it, it's, there's no great way to make a decision like this. It might be 60/40. It's not a decision you can make lightly. My family and I had a lot of intense conversations about what's good for kids and what's good for our family, and how do you balance those things? So felt like I was going to be letting a lot of people down. As I mentioned in the letter, part of the decision that factored in has been some of the negative vocal criticism in the community, and certainly not personal vocal criticism, but generalized toward administration in Hudson. There's a lot of support for teachers, and we have great kids, as you mentioned tonight, Mark. There isn't always a lot of support for administration. There is privately, and I really have appreciated student support, teacher support, and parent community support. I hope that the community can come together, as I think mentioned by one of the campaigns, about unity and community. And there's so much good in Hudson and a lot of excitement around high school learning for the future. So as I continue to have conversations with staff about room moves, that, you know, that could be a really unsettling thing, and yet a lot of excitement for the whole team of teachers who's going to carry the freshman academies forward, and leaders on teams who are going to be carrying forward the career partnership academies that Sandy and Cory talked about tonight. So I know that there are going to be good things happening here, and I'll be watching Hudson because I'm excited for those activities and would have loved to carry them forward, but did have this opportunity. So sad to go, but excited to start a new venture. Thank you for your support for high school learning for the future and of me in particular. I've really appreciated that personally.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Board member comments for Laura? Pat?
Laura, you and I came on about the same time. You knew a lot more about the process than I did, and I want to thank you so much for all of your hard work. Thank you to your family for sharing you. You have given 150%, and I thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Other board member comments? Mark?
Madam President, well, as Mary said, and I completely concur, losing Laura Love is a significant loss for the Hudson School District. You've been an outstanding leader, an outstanding principal. We are going to miss you. I want to thank you for sharing some of the reasons for this career move. I think it's important, I hope what it does is that it serves as something of a wake-up call to our community because no one wants to toil in a hostile work environment, regardless of how dedicated one is or how lofty the purpose. You know, we have some challenges. You're going to be really hard to replace. My best, my best hope is that we will probably have a strong internal candidate for this position because if I'm just looking at the world around me, I would say that right now, every top-flight principal candidate has put Hudson on their B-list. And why not? We know our salaries are below the median. We just did a recent study, and now we've got some pretty clear evidence of a less-than-ideal work environment. So if I'm a top candidate and have choices, I won't come here. I'm sorry. So, and I do want to, I really mean, I want to thank you because this is, this is a message that really does have to get out. There's far more positive folks in this community. They just, they just, we need them to, we need them to step up, and I hope that this will facilitate that.
Thanks, Mark. I do want to iterate that the high school is a fabulous place to work and to learn and surrounded by a fabulous team of administrators and teachers and wonderful kids who plan to change the world. So it is, you know, could be considered a hostile environment. On the other hand, I loved going to school and work every day, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Other board member comments for Laura?
Madam President, I've already spoken to Laura earlier, contacted her, and certainly want to express my thanks for what you've contributed to the school district, and I wish you the best in your next position, so good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Yeah, Laura, thanks for all your work. I've been to a lot of committee meetings with you, and I've seen you in action, I've seen your staff and your teachers and what you're doing in the high school, and just really supportive of the efforts. We have a lot to continue, and we will. And, you know, I understand my fellow board member, Mark Kajrosz, has some of your concerns, but there's a lot, there's a lot of things going really well in Hudson, and I think we're going to either attract or have a great candidate. And so it will be hard to fill your footsteps, you cast a shadow, but we're going to move forward in a real positive direction and continue the work that you started here, so.
Thank you, Brian. Sandy?
Yeah, good luck, Laura. I think you're probably going to like it there. I've got some friends who have kids in that district, and they speak very highly of it. So, and the new position, too, that's a step up. So I'm glad you took the position. Sorry to lose you here, but good luck with the new position.
Laura, for me, it's with a heavy heart that I thank you for all of your efforts and contributions to move HSD 2025 into action. It was, for a new board member to watch, you know, coming through and improving on SMART goals and the huge body of work on implementing high school learning for the future, it was earth-shattering how much work and time and planning and collaboration went into that. So thank you for that. And I, you know, when I read your resignation letter, I was struck and saddened by your comment. I know many people have come up to me after hearing of your resignation and extolled your work and just, you know, we're just thrilled with the amount of work and the role you played as the high school principal. So I just want to thank you for your service, and you are an enthusiastic and inspirational leader, so thank you for your work in Hudson. Okay, board members, we need a motion on the resignation of the high school principal.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sandy. Second by Dan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Unfortunately, the motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion.
Just a second. Mary has next steps on the process. I'm sorry. I moved us on a little too quickly. Sorry about that.
Certainly, we wish Laura the very best. Again, we've been very fortunate to have her here. She's moving on to a position that she's interested in, as she's talked about, and I think it's really important that board members and our community take stock in that she was recruited for this position. Our administrators are heavily recruited for positions, and we have teachers as well that that's starting, too. And, you know, we have to just keep that in mind. How do we stay competitive? How do we attract the best? And how do we keep the best? And as we look forward to the future, that's something that I think needs to stay in front of our decisions when we think about that. And we will be moving on with that selection of the next principal. We have some next steps to share with you. We shared information with the high school staff today, this afternoon after school. So the position was posted just a day or two following Laura's announcement. That posting ends on May 7, and the posting identifies a minimum of two years of administrative experience. Certainly, we'd like that to be longer, but we also wanted to make sure we could get the best list of candidates to consider. We are also looking at internal candidates at the present time, and there is some internal interest that has been expressed. So we will be considering internal candidates while that posting continues. Now, there are a number of rumors out there about internal candidates. In fact, we tried to kind of ask the high school staff, certainly who's very interested in this, to proceed with a little bit of caution and squelch some of those rumors because we've tracked down one of them even today that we heard to the source. And the source started with, you know, kind of like they were guessing that this might happen. And it's, and like telephone, that game in our youth, moved forward to the point that this was a done deal and the board had already decided and so forth. And so none of that has happened, as you know. And then we heard another rumor when we spoke to the high school staff that was new to us, and so we've heard numerous rumors, and we just would say to the high school staff, other staff in our school district and our community to hold on. There will be a decision, and we hope it's coming soon, about internal candidates. We would hope that we could finish that consideration when, within a week, two weeks at the outside, and then move on to, if we don't make a decision and the board does not take action on a candidate, move on to the external candidates that are now applying for the position. So if an internal candidate is not approved by the board to take the position, then the month of May would be really dedicated to consideration of external candidates. And we would hope to come to the board with a recommendation at the June meeting, and again, that would be external candidates. You know, that's a very condensed process. When Laura was selected as principal, the process ran from January to April. We'll use a very similar process if it goes external, but it'll be just much more condensed than it was in the past. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Board member questions or comments for Mary? Okay, we'll move on to next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. If a board member would please read the language moving those, as well as the...
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent items, including expenditures in the amount of $1,493,153.37.
Motion by Dan?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is committee reports, and we'll start with Mr. Bell.
Thanks. It'll be pretty quick. We already covered the first topic, which was the military uniform. The second one was, just proceeding forward, you know, we have a couple of different The second one was just proceeding forward to, you know, we have a couple of different courses that we're trying to do credit for in two different areas, bringing, you know, just trying to be kind of, do math while you're doing, like, you know, electronics in this case, so there was no reason not to do it. It's only a great idea, and they're going to keep exploring it, the, some of the Sandy and team, so.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any questions for Mr. Bell?
Okay, we'll move on to Finance Committee, and that would be me. We, at the Finance Committee, we had three items on our agenda. The first two we've discussed at length. The last one is the high school short-term space plan modification, and what we were looking at was having four lunch periods to try to handle some of the capacity issues. And so in looking at the schedule, the schedule didn't accommodate that, so when we were looking to going back to three, we had too many students to accommodate in our current lunchroom space. So there were, and Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, because we had the abbreviated version in preparation for legislators, I think, that night, but one of the proposals would be to add more tables outside in the area that extends up to the auditorium doors. The second would require that we remove carp, let's see.
The common area.
Or remove common, common area carpet?
Yeah, and putting tile.
And putting tile. And the third was to replace old lunch tables with new tables and just try to accommodate the students into the existing space. So as I understand it, the committee is going to be recommended the first option, and I'm not sure how it's coming back or where you'll be bringing it back. Maybe you could clarify that for me?
Yeah, that was, that was brought, subsequently brought to the Facilities and Grounds Committee with the, with the recommendation for a modification, so.
Okay. Any questions for me? Okay, we'll move on to Facilities and Grounds Committee, who might have more clarification on that item.
And I'll be subbing for Mr. Holland. We had five items on the agenda, Facilities Committee, and first was a proposal from the dugout club to provide for a new press box at Diversity Baseball Field, and then also the construction of an access path from the parking lot up to this particular press box. And this would be paid for by the dugout club with their own resources and fundraising. Looking at about $35,000, but again, once again, be no, no cost to the district. In conjunction with that, we talked about exploring a land use agreement with the City of Hudson. The City of Hudson property comes right up to that, where the press box is going to be, and the dugout and the press box itself may possibly be on some city property, so there's discussions about that, and that'll be brought back to the board at a later time. The high school short-term space modifications, which Lynn just alluded to, we did talk about that as well, and endorsed the extension of the cafeteria area, putting some more tables and that for, to accommodate 50 or 60 more, more kids. This was after, you know, the additional lunch period plan had been explored and looked like there was going to be too many complexities with working out that scheduling for that to be a viable solution. So hopefully this will provide some relief for, you know, it will be short-term, perhaps, you know, one to two years, depending on enrollment, how things move going forward. The staffing of facilities on weekends, high school, middle school, and Willa River. There's been a lot of demand for extracurricular things at our facilities, and we've been, we have a lot of custodial services, overtime, et cetera, and so the proposal was made to recommend putting some more folks on the weekends to kind of alleviate that and to accommodate more community groups that want to use our facilities. And we did also, you know, direct administration to see what we can do about recouping some more of the costs. I don't know if we have a percentage exactly, but I think we're a little lean on some of the fees that we're charging, and I think we want to try and make some adjustments upward to close that gap so that we're recouping most of our costs. The last item was with the UU property, and the committee endorsed it, moving forward with securing the consultant to do a wetland delineation so that we know exactly what we got there on UU. There was some work done preliminarily a couple of years back, but I think we need to get the, you know, a comprehensive and extensive wetland delineation so that we know what we have and to move forward on that property. That was it.
Any questions for Mark? Okay, we'll move on to the Personnel Committee, and Mark?
And me again, right. Personnel Committee met last week. Well, we discussed the 2013-14 staffing proposals, Nancy Sweet presented that, which the board had endorsed earlier. There was a very minor revision of the media specialist job description that Mr. Gramble walked us through, and the gist of that was basically just making a very minor modification with respect to the library, media specialist certification being preferred and not required to give the administration a little more flexibility in filling those positions. We discussed the health dental insurance, self-insurance plan that we talked about and endorsed earlier. We had a comprehensive presentation on that. Once again, I think it's a terrific way for this board to go, large, large savings. And then last, we did discuss briefly the planning for Superintendent Mary Bourne Egberton's evaluation and decided that we would use the similar model that we've used in the past few years, and that will be proceeding shortly.
Okay.
That's it.
Board member questions for Mark? Okay. If a board member would read the language in number 10, make a motion? Brian?
Hold on.
You can do it.
Madam Chair, move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19 Parent 8.5, Parent 1, Parent C, final notice of non-renewal of specific employees, see consideration of performance data, compensation, promotion, and continued employment of specific employees, and F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where par B applies, which if discussed in public would likely have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations.
Thank you. Motion by Brian?
Second.
Second by Mark?
One more time, Mr. Bell.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
We need a roll call.
Bell, aye.
Robson, aye.
Kaiser shot, aye.
German, aye.
Motion carries.